We're going to go ahead and get started. The first item tonight we need to deal with is a public hearing on voluntary annexation of two tracts of ground along Veterans Memorial Parkway, South Service Road, as I call it, just west of Warrenton. So, does anyone here want to address that issue?
If I came here, I'm just going to present the city's information about it. Baron Board of Alderman, we've received an application for a voluntary annexation. As a preliminary matter, I would ask that the applicant's application be made a part of the record here tonight. Also, a copy of the notice of the public hearing here tonight be made a part of the record, and the attachment showing the tracts of lands that the applicant is requesting to be voluntarily annexed into the city. And also, a copy of the city's ordinances made part of the record by reference. Beyond that, I have nothing further in the city's information.
Is there anyone else from the audience that'd like to address that issue? Hearing from no one, then we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the Board of Alderman meeting for the City of Warrenton for the date of August 21st, 2012. We always start our meeting off with a pledge of allegiance, so would everyone stand face the flag, please? Alderman Dryer will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is, we usually extend the courtesy and privilege for anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the Board or address the Board of Alderman. We ask that you come forward to the podium, state your name, keep your remarks five minutes or less, and keep them civil, please. So, if there was anyone that would like to address the Board, please come forward at this time.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, and all their lady, I guess that's what it is. My name is Jerry Brennan. I live on Sunrise Drive. First of all, I would like to thank very much the Chief of Police. We brought up about patrols on Sunrise Drive because we're all in there, most of us are seniors. The Chief has seen that we have regular patrols coming in there now. Everyone that I've talked to greatly appreciate that, Chief, and they wanted to thank you for it. One thing I would like to bring up, we, as a city, have a lot of things for the youth to do. We have soccer, baseball, up through middle age and all that stuff. But we don't have a lot for seniors. And I was wondering if the city could sponsor a senior walk day out at Bentley Park because they have good asphalt walkways around there, to get the seniors in the city to know where they can go and walk safely. The only place, about the only place we've got to walk now is in the streets, or on sod, or on broken up sidewalks. And I think it would be wonderful if we could have a senior walk day to start getting them used to coming out there, see what they got. Maybe we could get Kroger's and some of the others to donate some hot dogs, and buns, and sodas, and kind of have a thing out there. And those that are in electric wheelchairs, the paths are nice enough for those, those people could come out, go on it the same as walkers could. And I was just wondering if something could be maybe thought about on that line. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. We're always excited to get compliments because usually it goes the other direction. We just get complaints. So anytime you want to bring compliments, we welcome them. We will pass that information along to maybe the Recreation Director and see if we can do something like that. I try not to promote Pinkley Woods too much because I think it's the best kept secret in Warrenton.
It is.
It's a great place.
Someone out there today, I didn't even know.
I hear you. Anyone else like to address the Board?
How you guys doing? My name is Steve Shitzer. I'm the owner of Our Corner Bar &amp; Grill here in town. I just wanted a quick minute from you. I heard that there's a chance that you guys are going to be talking about in the future about possibly not having Catch the Glow next year. As a business owner and somebody that it does benefit me, you know, tremendously to get back to the busier season financially, I would sure hope that I'd get five minutes of your time in a meeting or a sit-down to find out maybe why you guys would not want to participate in that, and maybe if there's some other way that we can continue to have it and relieve some of the stress off the city.
Very good. I think that's an item that is going to be on the agenda tonight that might have a few minutes of discussion.
Is it, I didn't see it on here, that's why.
It's listed under the Schedule of Recreational Events.
Okay, so, okay.
So we may, we may talk about that a little later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Dan Durbin, and I would just like to kind of put a request in for all of us that are riding bikes, that maybe we can put up some place to park bikes where we can lock them when you go up to a business or something. There's no place around here that, you know, that has a place to lock your bike up to.
Good point. Do you have a bike?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Are you strictly meaning on Main Street?
Just, yeah, Main Street or around in general, wherever you know you could, anyone to park, if you want people to start using more of the, you know, streets.
If gas keeps going up, I'm going to have to start riding, too. Good point. Anyone else like to address the Board? Hearing no one from the public, that we extend the same courtesy to the Board of Alderman. If there are any comments that any of the Board of Alderman would like to make, please do it at this time. Hearing none from the Board, that means I get to talk, so. I'm going to be brief in my remarks, a couple things. I did want to introduce Linda Geis from the Warren County Record. She's the interim, is that a good way to put it, interim editor until a full-time replacement is added, and we welcome you to our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. The other thing, good news I wanted to mention to the public, pool refund checks went out this morning. Those people that are waiting for their refund on the two weeks that the pool is closed, check should be at your place tomorrow. The other thing I wanted to mention was the voluntary water conservation measures were lifted a week ago today. Reports from our well people and our Public Works Director that all the wells were functioning properly, water tables were staying at a level system, and we could go ahead and open up the spray area and the slide for the swimming pool, and we could authorize people to turn their sprinkling systems back on. I do appreciate the public's cooperation and efforts in staying with the voluntary water conservation measure. I think the majority of people followed it and did a good job. The biggest asset we had during the conservation measures was the Coca-Cola Company. They almost cut our water usage off from 50,000 gallons a day to maybe 1,000, and some days, majority of days, to zero. So, they helped us a lot. They were our largest water consumer. That's all I have at this time. I'm going to move on to the petition audit, and I'd like to introduce the two people from the Missouri State Auditor's Office. I'd like to introduce Bobby showers, State Audit Manager, and his assistant is Heather Stiles.
Good evening. My name is Bobby showers. I represent the State Auditor's Office, and as you all should be aware at this point, we've been petitioned by the citizens of Warrenton to come and do a petition audit of the city. And what that entails is, you know, state law required that we receive 476 signatures of your registered voters, and we received 553 ballot signatures. So, we have begun the process. We met with some of your city officials today and gave a little more detail than I'll be able to give here tonight, but we've, you know, we've begun that process. We expect to begin field work after Labor Day week sometime, probably the 10th or so September. And just to give you an idea of timeline, you know, our field work, it's hard for me to tell you exactly how long it's going to take, but field work typically can last up to two months in a city this size. Cost-wise, as stated on the petition form that the citizens signed, the estimated cost for a city of this size is, on the petition form, the estimated cost was 50,000 to 65,000. That is just an estimate. It depends on what issues we find, how much cooperation we get, et cetera. You will be billed for actual costs. It's not a flat rate type of a situation. Another issue is, we will also, in conjunction with that audit, we will be doing an audit of the municipal court, which is something that our office is statutorily required to do anyway, so you will not be billed for the cost of that particular audit. So we'll be putting out two reports, putting out a report of the city itself and of the municipal court. As far as the process is concerned, just so you're all aware, I know this city's never been through a petition audit, and your court hasn't either, so process works like this. We will begin our field work, we do what we call a survey process where we identify some issues. We've also been given some concerns by the chief petitioner group. We will look into those concerns, and we will also do kind of an overall review of the city in terms of management practices, budgeting, procurement, things of that nature. Looking for internal control witnesses also, that's one of our primary objectives. So, it's not necessarily just a financial statement audit, which I know you guys get annually. It's more than that. It's a different scope. We'll conduct some interviews with some of your city employees and city officials, and at the end of that process, we will present the Board with a draft version of the report. It will be in a closed session where we'll be able to talk through some of the issues. You can respond, and we can ask questions and talk through it, and at the end of that process, we will ask you to provide us written responses that will appear in the document and be part of the public document of our audit report. That doesn't happen until the end of the, until the end of the process, though, which at this point, it's, like I said, it's very hard for me to estimate, but I'm expecting this report to come out in probably late winter, early spring. So it's not like it's going to be out in a month or so. It's a process. And that's just, I'm just trying to be realistic with you on that. Other than that, I don't know that I have any other issues to, any other information to give you. If you have any questions, I'm more than welcome to answer them.
Any Board members have any questions? I think you'll find we'll be very cooperative and do everything in our power to furnish you with all the information you need. We're looking forward to getting started with it.
All right. I appreciate it.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
On item seven on the agenda is approval to close portions of Market Walton, Southwest Street, for the high school homecoming parade. Anyone want to address that issue? I see Mr. Frazier back there. Do you like to speak on that behalf?
Not much, because I have any questions. It's the same route that we've used year after year, and the same staging area right behind the lights here. So we'll be there right early next morning to clean up as well, too.
Okay. Any questions concerning this? At this time, then I need a motion from someone in the Board to proceed with the closing. Motion made by Alderman Tallow, second by Alderman Clark, to approve the, to close portions of Market Walton and Southwest Street for staging area, and Main Street from Southwest to Pinkley Street for the Warrenton High School Homecoming Parade from 5:45 to 6:45 PM on October 11th, 2012. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Motion carried and passed six to zero. Item number eight on our agenda is request the city to take over the streetlights from the Warrenton Historical Society. Do you have anyone that wants to address that issue? Please come forward and give us your name.
My name is Walter Schrader, and I represent the Warrenton County Historical Society. I served as the building chairman for the new addition to our existing museum, and one of the items that we included was tried to have streetlights that matched the downtown area, and I think they're king lumineers like you have on the downtown area, and at this time, we're ready for the city to take these over.
Y'all did a great job on your building project.
Thank you.
Very, very impressive.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Schrader? Let's see, Guy's not here tonight. Is there any input that we need from the City Public Works Department on these?
Brad is actually the one.
Oh, Brad's the one.
Over streetlights.
Brad, tell us.
Everything is way, way, Amherst would like it and the way we like.
Okay, and they're installed up to code. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can get a motion.
Yeah, we do.
I'll make a motion that we take over the streetlights from the Warrenton Historical Society.
Second.
Their new look.
Request, or motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Kendall, to approve the request to take over the streetlights from the Warrenton County Historical Society. Roll call vote on this, please.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Item number nine, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations and Finance.
The first item under operational updates tonight I have for you is just a reminder, next Tuesday night, the 28th of August, we have a special meeting. It starts at 6:00 PM with the sole purpose of approving our new tax rate. So it should be a very brief meeting, but that's next Tuesday night at 6:00 PM. So, just a reminder on that.
Terry, would you explain to us why we had to have that meeting, why we couldn't sneak that in on this meeting?
We have to wait until we receive revised rates from the county clerk's office, and because of the requirement for public hearing notice and to get it in the paper and meet the requirement, we didn't have enough days to get the notice in the paper and still meet the requirement before this meeting. So, unfortunately, the last two or three years, we've had to have a special meeting just because of the timing of when the rates come out, the information comes out. My next item for you this evening is a request for approval and reapproval of three policies. The capitalization and fixed asset policy is a request for a change previously, and I think in your packet you received copies of the proposed policy as well as the old policy that we're revising. The only change in this policy is based upon a recommendation both from our auditor and from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is to have a limit for capitalization of $5,000. Our current policy has 2,500, and so the request is to increase that 2,500 to the 5,000 limit, which is their best practice recommendation. In addition, we also keep, for the equipment that is below the capitalized limit, we keep a property listing of smaller equipment items, and we're requesting to increase that limit from $250 to $500. In the current times, a piece of equipment that you pay $250 or less than 500 generally doesn't have a lifespan of more than a year. So, to put the tags on it and track it through the property system doesn't make a lot of
I understand on the, the change from 2,500 to $5,000 that it's the best practice recommendation. Is it also the best practice recommendation from that organization, our auditors, to make this change from 200 to 500?
They don't have a recommendation for a limit that we're aware of. The recommendation, when you look at what they're suggesting that you do, it's to keep a property listing with items that have a useful life of greater than a year. So there is no dollar limit that we've found.
We need motions on each one of those items?
I think we do.
We do?
So that we have an approval date for those to go in our book.
So the first, if there's no questions from any of the Board of Members, the first motion I need is on the capitalization and fixed assets policy.
Still move?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Flake, to approve the capitalization and fixed asset policy. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
The next policy for your review in the packet is, the new policy is called a bad check policy. The previous policy was called returned items. The addition to this bad check policy, and the reason we renamed it is because in our code book, it refers to the policy that lists the return item fee as a bad check policy. That's the title in our code book. So, we changed the name of the policy to coincide with what's in our code book. The rate, nothing else has changed, other than the addition of, we added to this policy how you get off of cash-only status, which previously was not in our policy. There was a written document, but it wasn't contained in the actual policy. So it specifies how if a person gets on the cash-only situation, how there is now a provision for them to be able to get off of cash-only. So that's the addition to this policy. But the previously approved policy was called returned items.
The questions or concerns for Terry on the bad check policy? Need a motion from the Board?
Still move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Clark, to approve the bad check policy. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
And last, but certainly not least, is the pool refund policy. The previous version, there is a change in here from the previous policy. Previous policy read that all swimmers, only swimmers in the pool, should there be lightning or some weather event, who signed in within the last hour would receive this day pass to come to the pool for another day. And this only affects the swimmers that are paying the daily rate. Doesn't affect pool pass swimmers or those people. But the practice that has been going on is that anyone who's in the pool at the time the pool is closed for a weather event has been receiving a day pass to come to the pool at another time. So, the recommendation is to change our policy so that everyone in the pool at the time it's closed receives a day pass.
Good.
I think staff and the pool staff as well, I'm not sure how we got to doing what we're doing, but it seems to be much more fair than if you came in in the last hour, those are the only people who are getting a day pass.
I think it would be a lot easier to enforce this policy than the other one, so.
Absolutely. A lot less work to try to figure out who came in at what time.
That's what I talked to. Okay. Any questions on this?
One stupid one, I believe. When you talk about, and I think I know the answer to this, when you talk about the only people entitled to the refund are people that are in the pool, you don't mean that are physically in the water, you mean that are in the...
Pool complex.
In the complex, okay. I assumed that.
I make a motion to approve the new pool refund policy.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Kendall, to approve the pool refund policy. Roll call on there.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
And then in your packet, you also had a list of policies to be repealed. These are primarily the policies that last meeting, if you'll remember, we had gone through. We actually consolidated a lot of single policies into a policy, for example, under insurance, that listed all of the types of insurance together to make that more concise. So this is a listing of those policies. Our city attorney tells us that even though you have approved a new policy, the old policy needs to be formally repealed. So this is repealing those policies that we've replaced or consolidated with something new at the last meeting, and then there are a couple that aren't, were not policies at all. They were more the procedural part of how do you do it, rather than what the policy is, and those really don't belong in our policy book. So, this is just the housekeeping for those policies that have been either reapproved or consolidated into something else.
Any questions or concerns over repealing the old policies? We'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Dryer, to repeal the obsolete policies that presented. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Yes.
Alderman Dryer.
Yes.
Alderman Flake.
Yes.
Alderman Cornell.
Yes.
Alderman Tallow.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. That's it for you?
This evening.
I've got item 10.
Can I ask why the approval, the agenda was amended and an item removed?
Schulte Supply, you already approved. You made a motion to approve it at the last meeting, and we didn't realize that. We thought there would be an agreement on this evening, but realized there was nothing to sign, so that's the reason.
Thank you.
You done?
I'm done, for now.
All right. Chief, howdy, y'all.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have first my monthly report from July 2012. Nothing really there that stands out for the month of July. Alderman Cornell, I added that report that you asked for.
Thank you.
Hopefully that answers the questions that you had there. Actually, of note in that was the assist to other agency at 146. That's indicative of a pilot program that we started, actually, I think in June, and that was responding to all EMS calls. So, we're running on those as an assist to the ambulances. It turns out that was received actually pretty well by the ambulance district, so much so that they offered and taking them up on it, gotten tours of the ambulances, so all of our officers know where important equipment is in case a medic asks for us to go get it out of the truck, so. Turns out to be a pretty good thing. I think we're going to continue doing that.
Responding on all EMS calls, or all, you're not responding with them to routine transfers of that nature?
No, 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 no. Just medical emergencies.
What are the, what all falls under the category of directed patrol?
Parks, basically all city owned properties, the cemetery, and then from time to time we have requests for...
Vacation checks, that?
Vacation checks are actually listed under security check.
Okay.
On that second page.
Yep, I got it.
But just, you know, occasionally we get a special request to keep an eye on something for a little while, so that would be included in that directed patrol number as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on your floor?
Have any questions for the Chief? Okay, we're ready for you to...
All right, moving on to my second item, that's the approval to hire LeAnn McLaughlin as a crossing guard, $20 per day. She will be starting tomorrow. LeAnn comes to us as an actual employee of the school district. Leanne comes to us as an actual employee of the school district. She works, I think, at Daniel Boone in the lunchroom, and so she wants to have additional exposure to the kids, and it's really a breath of fresh air, actually. She's going to do a good job.
And did, was she subjected to the same application process, background process as our normal hires?
Yes.
Okay.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we hire Leanne McLaughlin as a crossing guard at $20 per day with a start date of August 22nd, 2012.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallow to hire Leanne McLaughlin as a crossing guard at $20 per day with a start date of August 22nd, 2012. Roll call.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Item 11, Planning and Zoning Director, Jack Kemp.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Before you, is a request to revise the existing approved site plan. Audit the villas at Hawthorne to include storm shelters in the playground. They wish to add three storm shelters, an additional sidewalk and landscaping around the shelters. They also wish to add a playground area with sidewalk fencing and a retaining wall. If you approve this, they will update the site plan and show actual locations, as the plan to show actual locations of the items. And if you remember, back on May the 5th, the site plan was revised to add the six additional lights. And I did receive a call from Tammy yesterday. They're still trying to finalize the actual storm shelters, the exact model and the policy that they're going to have out there, as far as who has keys, maintenance, or if each resident's going to have a key to sort of work out the actual logistics of, once they get them in place. So, she asked if we could, she's requesting approval for the playground tonight, and just your thoughts on the shelters. And then, maybe she'd come back at the next board meeting to actually get approval for the shelters, once they know exactly which model, and make sure they have the funds to complete the shelter work.
Seems kind of original to see a landlord coming in requesting to add additional lighting and storm shelters, and more sidewalks, and playgrounds. But, I'm new to this, but man, that doesn't seem like something that happens every day.
Are the shelters built now, or are they...
It sounded like they would be, kids, there should be a detail in there for you. They're 12-foot by 8-foot, like 6-foot 4 tall.
They're like prefab, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe it was what, I don't have the actual building, just the dimensions on it.
Yeah.
And it'll be sitting on a concrete pad.
Is that what I hear?
8-by-12-by-3-foot deep concrete pads. And they're still trying to get that finalized. Said there's a lot of items on the market for like individual residents' storm shelters, but for bigger developments like that, they're really having trouble finding something that is the perfect fit. But, I was sort of wanting to know your feedback, whether you thought that was a good idea for them to keep moving forward on the shelters, but definitely wanted to try to get approval for doing the playground area.
Are the shelters required? Are they doing that because of the, not being basements in those buildings?
I think they're just trying to add something extra to the thing they have at their project that competitors don't.
That's great.
Well, if they need approval, I'll make a motion to go, to give them the approval and the okay to go ahead and start with the playground. I think the storm shelter is a great idea. I'm sure it'll make people out there a little more secure. The storm does warrant the use of. I think the playground's a great idea. Kids can never have enough playground area to play in.
But they're also wanting to add sidewalk fencing and retaining wall. Is that part of the playground?
Yes, and it's...
Project?
It's shown on the, on the detailed part.
So, I'll double check your motion. Are you saying you're going to go ahead and approve the storm shelters now too?
Well, they weren't ready for that yet, were they?
Yeah, just the playground tonight.
Playground right now.
When they get storm shelters finalized.
Along with the fencing and retaining wall.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I was just making a comment on them.
Okay.
On the other one.
Need a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the revised site plan for the villas at Hawthorne to include the playground, sidewalks, and fences. Is that covered, Jack?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Roll call please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Anything else, Jack?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Jim Daly, Building Commissioner.
Good evening. I have your permit report for the month of July. Notable on there is your, the Yibo Soy Sauce Factory is being built. It's in our industrial park over there.
The Soy Sauce Company?
Yeah.
Then I also have your property maintenance record. Note, a lot of pools on there have been permitted now.
Well, some people take them down instead of following up with the permit. Says a lot of pools are removed.
Yeah, yes. They'll take them down versus getting the permit, yeah. A lot of that is because of the fencing requirement. It's not worth for them to put a fence to keep the pool. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions?
See, why are these signs are going up today?
Yes.
Yep.
So, if anybody still didn't know what was going there, it should know.
They've been working on it, haven't they?
Yep, I know it now.
Think they worked through it all through last week?
Yep, I noticed that too.
Any questions for Mr. Daly? Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
We're ready to move to Maintenance Department, Grounds Director, Brad Bullcrush.
Evening, Gordon Mayor. First off is the monthly report from July the 18th to August 20th. Not much really changing. Still getting, still cutting grass and trimming. Let's see. Just doing our normal, normal stuff.
Do you have problems finding any grass to cut?
No, there's, actually, it's been raining enough to keep a lot of them, keep them busy. I mean, it's hit and miss, but it's, there's still quite a bit out there to get. So, we've been keeping busy doing that, resetting some headstones and a few other maintenance items up at the cemetery, so been working on that, working on some equipment.
Soccer fields certainly came back strong.
Yeah, when we started irrigating those, yeah, they perked up, perked up nice, and we've got the irrigation on the ball field, so they ought to be seeing a little bit here shortly, so. A little bit of water always helps them. Any other questions on the...
Any questions for Brad?
Next I have is the approval to sell, we have two Great Dane mowers, a 2002 and a 2003. Like, put those on the items to sell list that we have. Both of them are out of service, and we did, they're just, no, they're of no use to us, so we're wanting to get rid of them.
Did you get good use out of them? You know how many hours you ran on each one?
These were about, I think, three times the amount we were supposed to get out of them, so we were over, I think, I'm thinking we were right close to over 3,000 hours on them.
On each one?
Yeah, and that's well over 3,000 hours on air-cooled motors. They say it's about the limit, and these were over...
That's good.
Three times, so. Yeah, we got our...
Money's worth out of them?
Money's worth out of them. Even the dealer was surprised we cut that much out of them.
Will these be put on the Gov's Deal website?
Right.
We need a motion to sell those, and I'll entertain one.
So moved.
Second.
Our, motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the sell items, the two Great Dane mowers. Need a roll call on that.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next on my list is the approval to remove the slide, the hood slide at Binkley's and the embankment slide at Morgan Park. These two slides, this slide here was moved, I'm thinking it was from Corey Park by our previous, a couple park staff years ago, when the Binkley was brought in, and really, it's old, it's, it's got a lot of entanglement hazards on it, something we just need to get rid of. There's no way to retrofit anything with it. We just need to get rid of it. So, I'm asking for your all's approval to get rid of, to take, have this one taken out. As you can see, this bar going across was something that they welded on. That gap in there, any little kid with a hoodie on, string gets caught in there, he goes down, he's going to strangle himself. And that's one of the reasons we need to get these out of here.
Does that include the swings?
No, the swing, the swing is, is fine, we're going to take that off, but the slide was just put up, where they had it when they moved it and thought it was a good idea to move, but at that time, we thought it was, but it's not now.
Served our purpose.
Yeah, it's well served our purpose. The next one is the, the embankment slide at Binkley, or at the Morgan Park. The changes this year on the embankment is, it can only have a minimum, or a maximum of 12 inches high on the sidewalls going down. This one is well over 5 feet. And there's no way to lower it, put any kind of surfacing below it that would, that would meet our requirements, because the sides on it is where we run into the problem on that, because it's a, it's basically a chute, and it doesn't have the required sides on it. So, and this is part of an old playground structure that was taken out when, I think, the pool was first put in. There was an old wooden structure, and the wooden ones are, are on their way out anyhow because of the splinters and everything else. So, I know there's a lot of kids going to be mad, but it's something that we're just going to have to do.
From somebody who uses Binkley Park quite a bit, and it's been a discussion nearly every time, the entire group, is a lack of play equipment there, and now we're going to decrease that down to there'll be, what, four swings there? It's a little bit...
Two swings.
I'm sorry?
Two swings.
Two swings. It's a little bit discouraging to be removing play equipment without any, any thought to, I wish we would have talked about this at budget time, whether or not we could have found the money to put in something to replace that.
Actually, Binkley Park, in the, in the park board's grand scheme of things, was not to have any playground. It was more walking only, kind of the, they wanted for more for the adult people up there, just walk and have the quietness of it. And that was kind of their thing with trails and everything. This, this swing that was up there was put in just for, for the use of the pavilion. It's kind of the way their thought process was going, that we, they had Corey Park that's got playground, Dyer that has three sets of playground, Morgan that has the big playground set there. So, I mean, that's kind of what they were thinking, and they wanted something that people who wanted to walk and run and not, you know, have the screaming kids and everything that goes along with that. That was kind of their, their place to sit and, you know, reflect whatever they wanted to do up there.
I always view parks and kids together, so that's, I'll adjust my way of thinking.
Need a motion from the board to approve the removal of the slides.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Dryer to remove the slides at Binkley and Morgan Park. Roll call please.
Alderman Tallow?
Why you saying that bigger one, Joe, but that was my favorite. That was my favorite, yeah.
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
For the safety purpose, yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Next I have the approval of some capital items on some projects we want to get started on. Do you want to do them individually, or if you can do these all at...
I don't know, can we run those in a group? I think so.
They're budgeted, right?
Yes.
Yeah, on their park, yeah, you can run them through.
They all are budgeted.
First one is the drinking fountain at Corey Park, and this will be the one behind Diamond 2. That one got vandalized and damaged so bad that we can't fix it, so we figured we'd just buy a new one and put it in. Second one is the benches and pads for Binkley and Dyer. This is for the, the new benches we're going to put in, get rid of the old drag around ones, put some nice pads in and benches that we set in concrete, so they can't be moved. The blocks for the benches at Binkley, these are the ones on the two benches that we're going to put in on the south side of the lake. Some benches, or the blocks we're going to build up, put the dirt in, because right now, if you all been over there, that south side is all sloped. We're going to raise those up so those are flat, put those blocks down by the water, so it'll be more of a flat area, so you can actually sit there and fish or whatever you wanted to do. The picnic tables for Binkley are going to replace some of the ones out in the, out in the area. Some of those are getting pretty bad. Going to pour new, or pour pads for them and set these benches on, or picnic tables on top of them. And the last thing is the east side electrical. We've got the okay from Amer and UE to run that in for the new bathroom, restroom facility, so we're going to trench that line in. It's basically, it's trenching it in from the east C parking lot, all the way down through the practice fields, across the B parking lot, and over to Amer and UE is building us a new line, extending the line there and coming down, and we'll be tying into, into their, their hole down there. So, basically, what we're going to be doing is laying the conduit, the wire, and trenching it in for them.
And that's out at the recreational complex?
Athletic complex, yes.
Athletic complex, okay. Any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion, and we'll group those all together.
I'll make a motion to approve the items that Brad mentioned for improvements.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the drinking fountain at Corey Park, benches and pads for Binkley and Dyer Park, blocks for benches at Binkley Park, picnic tables for Binkley Park, and the electrical on the east side of the ball field. Roll call please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Jenny, is that all Brad?
I have...
I've got one question. Brad, because I'm going to get asked this weekend, what is the status of the tennis court resurface?
We're starting tomorrow. We picked up the material today, talked to the ladies last night. They were going to, we were trying to get it today, but we got, they got back late with it, so I figured I'd call them and told them they could play tonight, but tomorrow, we're going to start on Morgan, Morgan Park we're starting on tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, it shouldn't take too long to get them done.
That'll make Alderman Cornell's life a lot easier.
It will.
Get that resurfaced.
I've had, I've had a couple of comments about that, yes.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Recreation Director, Jenny Hoffman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have two items to discuss with you tonight.
The first one on the list is the revised recreation special events program that's been provided to you. You'll notice the items listed there are the sweetheart dance in February, the egg hunt in March, in April, the major league baseball pitch hit and run, June through October would be the farmer's market. In June, we would have the fishing derby and British soccer camp. In July, there would be a pool party for baseball, softball, T-ball league. Also in July, the citywide yard sale. Then in September, we would have the picnic for the soccer league, the auto fest, and the goldfish grab, as well as the NFL pass kick. The circus would be in October, and the adult kickball tournament would take place in November. I would like to request approval to put this revised list into effect.
Did you want to say something?
I had a couple of questions. Unfortunately, I had some family commitments, I wasn't able to be here for the special events work session. Tell me where we are on Catch the Glow is obviously missing, as is Hometown Christmas, as is Torch Run.
On Hometown Christmas and Torch Run, those programs would be absorbed by the department heads as public relations types events. And Catch the Glow, we have looked at placing that on hold for a year to allow our other programs to grow. We've gotten a lot of great compliments on our baseball, softball, T-ball league and soccer league. Those programs are requiring a little bit more time and focus, as well as some of the other things we have going on, such as the pool. Also during that time period, I think that the community can give us an idea of how they feel about Catch the Glow, is it effective in their eyes, is it something that they want to see in the future? And then next year, for 2014, we would take a look at Catch the Glow again.
Wish you could've been at the meeting. We miss you. The board had quite a lengthy discussion on that very topic. And if I can remember correctly, I think part of the issue was that we felt we were getting out of balance with recreation and special events, that we were putting more emphasis on special events, and we wanted to bring our recreational numbers back up. Catch the Glow is an expensive project, costs us a lot of money, takes a lot of man hours. It's a great event, we're not knocking it, but it's a costly event. We brought, we pretty well suffered the entire bill on Catch the Glow. And what we would like, I think what the board told me, they would like to move more in a supportive role and maybe let the WDA or some other service organizations pick it up and run with it and see how far they go, and we support it in that aspect. Am I phrasing it close to what we talked about?
Yes.
Absolutely so.
And I can see, and again, I'm sorry, I had family commitments, I couldn't be here. I did express some of my concerns to Ms. Thorne in advance of that. I can see both sides of the Catch the Glow issue. I can see reasons to continue it. This year, I went back to the meeting directly following that, and we talked about how the streets were packed, it was good attendance. I believe Alderman Kendall and Alderman Tallo both said that, congratulated Jenny on a good program. My bigger concern is, if we're going to go away from doing this and then get the input of the community to see if they want it back in 2014, why didn't we get the input of the community before we discontinued it? Why wasn't the, some of the businesses that are gonna be affected by this brought into this conversation? Some of these associations that we hope will pick it up and carry on, why didn't we include them in the conversation prior to discontinuing? Shortly after, I guess it was the rod run, maybe, we had business owners here presenting a list of signatures complaining about a lack of communication with those businesses. And it seems like we said, you know what, we're gonna improve our communication with you, and then we cut them out of this discussion. No matter where the discussion ends, I think it's not responsible to have that discussion without those people that are affected by it.
It was an open meeting, correct? Was posted for the public?
Public open meeting.
Terry?
Yes, it was posted.
Ms. Kendall, we also talked about, if we're only going to post the meeting, and you know what, if they can show up, they show up, if they saw the posting. But we talked about the lack of communication, and we were gonna improve that communication through letters, through personal contact. I just don't think it would've been too much to ask to contact these businesses and say, this is what we're considering, these are our issues, these are what we hope to see it do in the future, come to our meeting and let's sit down and discuss it. Just seems like it wasn't done the right way.
Alderman Cornell, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, we had a special meeting prior to the event to get feedback from the public, from the other companies and offices and shops and that along Main Street, and I think we had two, maybe three show up.
Prior to what event?
Prior to the Catch the Glow, where we're trying to get feedback on what we could do better.
Okay.
What didn't work the previous year, what we can do better for this year. That was a special meeting just for that, they were notified, we had three business owners show up.
I was not present during that, I don't recall that. And I would say that planning took place well before I took office.
Well, I'm letting you know that.
But number one, let's say there were two or three, that's two or three. Just because we didn't have attendance talking about how we want to approve, improve it, doesn't mean we wouldn't have had business owners concerned about discontinuing this program. I guess my thing is, I don't see what it hurts. Yes, I do, I see what it hurts. It hurts our public image and our relationship with the businesses not to do business that way. That's what it hurts, so.
That's your opinion.
That is my opinion.
That's your opinion.
Yeah, and I think the other discussion we had that you weren't privileged to, that I think we do a good job at Catch the Glow. In fact, we patted everybody on the back, what a great job we did. And what we found out is, I mean, we've got tons of service organizations within the community, as long as we're gonna do it, they're gonna let us do it. And we would really like to see them step forward and take some of the responsibility and let us assist maybe in a back position.
I have no, I have absolutely no problem with that, I agree with that. But let's not discontinue it and then call them and say, hey, would you all pick up the slide? Let's include them in the discussion from the start, so.
So are you saying we should've formally invited them to the meeting? An open meeting?
I believe contacting them would have been appropriate, and I don't think that it would've been too difficult to do. Aren't we, didn't we agree that we were going to do that in the future on changes of events, like the rod run? We absolutely did. That we would improve our communication, we wouldn't send it out in a letter mixed in with other items, that we would have direct personal contact with these people, so.
Well, there's some businesses that appreciate Catch the Glow and they benefit from it. And there's also some businesses that oppose it, they don't like it because it hurts their business by shutting down Main Street. They got businesses down there, so they're voice and their opinion also. I mean, they're not satisfied with Catch the Glow because it hurts their business that day by shutting down Main Street.
And I have no problem with that.
So there's two sides to the coin.
Absolutely, let's invite them in and hear both sides of the coin. You didn't hear anybody complain at that open meeting about discontinuing or about continuing Catch the Glow, because they weren't here all either, so.
It was posted, and it was, and I know some of them knew, but I would hate to get into the habit of every time we have a meeting of that type, that you have to try to contact all the individuals.
Because then you're gonna leave somebody out, yeah.
If you miss somebody, that's probably a greater problem yet. So I would hate to do that. It's posted, we put it on our board out front, it's out there for everybody to see.
Then let's not, then let's not, the next time somebody complains.
Only thing I can say is I'm gonna have to put you in charge of contacting all these people because.
You know what, we've got a recreation department to do that, John.
Well, I think she's got jobs to do too.
Absolutely, and that's one of them.
And if you miss somebody, what happens then?
All right, that's fine, if we want to take that stand. If we want to take that stand.
And I don't recall saying that we do that all the time, I don't remember that conversation going on.
I believe Mr. Chidster's one that presented the list of names, and we said, we will be contacting you, we will make our letters more clear.
I don't recall agreeing to that.
Well, okay. It's belaboring the point, so that's just my opinion.
I guess a good example would also be, John, is well aware that this is known by business owners on Main Street, who's here? Steve. Steve's the only business owner here tonight with a concern. Now, don't you think if it was that upsetting to all of them, they'd be here?
Mr. Chidster's here because I ran into him on my way to the meeting.
Okay.
So.
Anything else?
Nothing from me.
And this is out of, maybe out of character for me, I usually don't call on anyone from the audience, but I did tell Mr. Chidster that we were gonna address this issue later. If you would like to ask us a question, you may do so at this time.
First, I do want to point out that the event, I think, went great. I think Jenny did a great job, and she had a lot on her shoulders. And I would like to do something to help out. I understand the city would like to get out from underneath of this so they could focal, you know, focus more on some of the other stuff you guys want to focus on, but, you know, give us another year, I mean, let us try to get ahead of this for next year and let another group take it over. If you close this, it's gonna take years to get it back. Just like for me, if I close one day that I'm supposed to be open, I lose people for weeks, sometimes months, before I can get them back. This, the reason I'm here is because I literally do a, over a week's worth of business in that one day. Now, I have a lot of overhead to get that, but it's at the perfect time of the year for me, it gives me that extra push financially to make it back into the busy season. You guys don't have this next year, I'm shopping for a new building somewhere else. I can't, my overhead's way too high here, the per capita here is just too small, the bottom line, I mean, this is huge for me. You guys, this decision, will be making a decision for me. I mean, I need this day. I need, I understand that there's nobody else that comes in here, but I'm somebody, I mean, I should count for something. The fact that it was put in, if it was put in there like this, my wife and I both read this, we didn't see anything about it. You know, it's not, you can't pull out from this that there's anything to be discussed about Catch the Glow. So if it is labeled this way, same with the other previous meetings, we look at that stuff and it's like, okay, we're good. And I'd love to come down here and sit at every meeting, but we have other stuff to do. My wife works a full-time job, I drive and work at the bar. So, just like you guys have regular jobs and do this, I feel a little backslid because as Mr. Cornell says, it was agreed, and I will find the video for it, that there would be some more, on not every little object, but I mean, you're talking about a huge project, you said it yourself, it's a lot of money. That warrants to me that talking to, like we talked about. I don't want negative between business and city, I want positive from everybody. I'd just like a little more opportunity to try to get, because for me, the Downtown Association, they're, it's, they're in a dysfunctional state, otherwise they'd be here at their meeting.
Why do you feel that that is, Steve?
You know, it's, you're asking me a question that's gonna have some recourse, but just the way it's run and the people that are running are too focused on their own agenda, where myself, I'm a little more open, I'm a little more concerned about my neighbors' business, the people that live behind me. It doesn't have to be just about me making money that day. If there's some things that can change or need to be changed, but they just seem to be, they want to go back to it was in 1950, and it's not 1950, it's 2012. Things either get bigger or they die, period.
Do you all meet as a group?
I do not belong to the Downtown Association because they want to charge me money to be part of that. And to, in order for me to do that and be a part of that, I just don't agree with some of their politics. So I don't choose to join that group, and I think there just needs to be, I think there needs to be a Warren County group, because this is a countywide thing, this is not just for the city, I mean, it's.
And then that's a valid point, and you see who's funding it.
The tourism board is, correct? Okay, the tourism board. That's money that's supposed to be used according to the way it was set up, to bring business and people from outside to inside. And I understand, it's still money being spent, but that's money that's been allocated already as tourism to bring people from outside. So if you were telling me you're spending sales tax dollars, I would agree, you know, it's not feasible for the city to put out that kind of money. But you're talking about money that's being allocated from the hotels, from the tourism money. That's what it's for, it's to bring people in.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for your time.
Any other questions or concerns?
Well, I just think that Jenny puts in a lot of extra time concerning the Catch the Glow festivity, and she's booked up pretty tight running our athletic programs and everything else, and gets to the point where she puts in so much time that really she can't get around all of it. It's just that simple. I mean, she does all the preparation, she does the entire day of Catch the Glow, and she just puts a lot of time into it. I just think that she spends a lot of time on her athletic programs and everything else and gets to the point where there's not enough hours in the day.
Any other comments?
I just want to clarify, I am not speaking to whether or not we should continue to have Catch the Glow, I just think that's a discussion that should've been had with more people involved, that's it.
No other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised special event schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the revised special event schedule. Roll call vote please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. Farmer's market update, Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I was asked to come back to the board and provide information about the farmer's market. We discussed briefly the possibility of extending the hours. So what I did was I created a trial period for an extension that involved two weekends. So on the first Saturday, that was Saturday the 11th, what I did was just had our staff say to the vendors, you know what, you guys can stay here till noon today, and we'll just see, you know, what happens with the crowd. And then on the second Saturday, we mailed a letter in advance to the vendors, letting them know they can stay till noon, plus we put some signage out so that the customers would know. It's kind of difficult to explain, you know, how it went, so I'm gonna try to just kind of compare certain times. On Saturday the 11th, at 8:00 a.m., we had 12 vendors. Saturday the 18th, at 8:00 a.m., we had eight vendors. At 10:30 a.m., which is when we typically close the market, on Saturday the 11th, we had two vendors at 10:30 a.m. On Saturday the 18th, we still had eight vendors, but some of them started to pack up. So now we're talking about the moments after the farmer's market typically closes. On Saturday, August 11th, the first weekend, at 10:36, we had three customers, and then after that, no one showed up. On Saturday the 18th, one customer arrived at 10:35, and another one arrived at 10:40. On Saturday, August 11th, the first Saturday, at 10:40 a.m., we officially had no customers, and the last vendor stuck around, but he packed up at 11:40 a.m. On Saturday the 18th, which was the second weekend, at 10:40 a.m., we only had two vendors. At 10:40 a.m., we had two customers. Then two customers arrived at 10:45, one customer arrived at 10:50, and one customer arrived at 11:13. But what we also do is we track the busy timeframes. So Saturday the 11th, the busy timeframes were from 8:00 a.m. to 8:30, 9:30 a.m. to 9:45, 10:15 to 10:30. And basically at 10:20 on that first Saturday, it just died down. On Saturday the 18th, our busy timeframes were 8:00 to 8:30, 8:45, 9:30 a.m., and at 10:15. So that's the information that I collected. Hopefully it would help to make a decision whether or not to extend. Hopefully, it would help to make a decision whether or not to extend the Farmer's Market hours.
What are your vendors basically saying?
The vendors, I haven't collected their comments, but I think their actions speak for them. For example, on the first Saturday, there was only two vendors that stayed at 10:30. The second Saturday, we only had two vendors at 10:40.
We've only had two weeks of feeling the notify?
That's correct.
Put the word out, get extended another couple of hours?
That's correct. What we did was, the first Saturday, it was unannounced, just the extended time was there. The second Saturday, it was announced, and the second, the extended time was there.
Are you seeing that with the produce at the end of its season, especially with the soft weather we've had, that you see any more of that type of stuff coming in where it drove more people?
What I've seen in the past with the Farmer's Market, and some of the vendors will agree, when school starts, things just start to slow down a little bit. And sometimes you'll see somebody come in with the gourds, you know, the pumpkins and stuff like that, or the pre-Christmas items. But generally, the market itself slows down once school starts.
When does it market end? When do you close?
Typically, we close at 10:30 AM. We ring the bell.
No, what, what month and day?
Sure. I'm sorry, I'm going to check here. The Farmer's Market goes from early July through October, the 6th.
The 6th, okay. You know, I don't know, I've got mixed emotions, whether we've given the vendors enough time to adapt to it, or maybe we might want to look at it a little more lengthy time, or maybe we might want to look at it early next year in the early part of the market.
I think, and I'm the one that brought up that I would like to see, and I've been approached by people wanting later hours, but I'm wondering if we're so far into it, if it's even possible to get people, get the message out there that it is open later, and what the vendor situation is. So maybe it's something to discuss with the vendors at the close of the season. I know one of the, I did some looking online at a database of some area Farmer's Market, and what concerned me most was, we had one of the shortest windows of time, especially for those that are open on a weekend day, so.
Sure, and the bulk of our marketing is done at the beginning of the season, so it would be a good time to get a message such as that out.
It looks like you have increased the number of vendors, so.
We have.
Who are picking up a few more here and there.
It's really nice to look at the pavilion and see it full on Saturday mornings. It's new for us. We've had to kind of work for that in the past, and this year, they're just coming.
Good. So I think what I'm hearing is that we'll kind of leave it as it is for now, and maybe look at it again early in the season.
Correct. If there's no objections, I think that would be a great plan.
When you say leave it as is, does that mean go back to closing at 10:00?
10:30, back to your regular closing.
Sure.
Okay. Is that whatever, what I'm hearing?
That would not make sense to me.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's all that I have for you tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
I have Gabrielle Curry, Finance Manager, and before I let her talk, I want to, on behalf of the city and the Board of Aldermen, we want to congratulate you for completing your master's program in accounting. And we're expecting great returns on your investment there. Thank you, Gabrielle.
Thank you.
All right. We have proposed budget amendments for two capital items. We're working on budgets. The department heads do a really good job of, you know, figuring out which projects are going to get completed by the end of June, and then which ones need to be carried over into July. And we had two projects that were not completed as anticipated, so they weren't included as a line item for the current budget. The cash, however, was already made unavailable, you know, since we expected to spend it by the end of June. So this isn't going to affect the unappropriated cash funds. Also, in the past, we did budget revisions, you know, around January, February-ish, and then did them again in June. But we feel it's a better practice to do these as projects come up, you know, where we need to revise the budget. So moving forward, we're going to do them as needed. So I have requests to revise the budget for the MODOT Highway MM Resurface Project, which would be budgeted in the General Fund, and the additional bay on the maintenance shed, which would be budgeted in the Water and Sewer Fund. Those are listed as bills to ordinance, so you all will be voting on those later. So unless you all have any questions.
Can we do those both together?
No, because they're separate ordinance.
No, they're on the same ordinance.
Oh, okay, I take that back. They're on the same ordinance.
Okay. Any questions on that? So I need a motion on the, oh, we're doing these in the bill ordinance? Is that, okay, my mistake.
If you have any questions, that's all I have.
Okay. Now I'm on board, on there. I need a motion for first reading on Bill Number 39-12.
Call for the first reading of Bill Number 39-12.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallo for Bill Number 39-12.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Borton, Missouri and Reinhold Electric for the Highway 47 lighting project.
Call for second and final reading and passage of Bill Number 39-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading of Bill Number 39-12.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Borton, Missouri and Reinhold Electric for the Highway 47 lighting project.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Bill Number 40-12, first reading.
Call for the first reading of Bill Number 40-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallo, seconded by Alderman Clark for first reading of Bill Number 40-12.
In ordinance amending the budget of the City of Borton, Missouri for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
Call for second and final reading and passage of Bill Number 40-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second and final reading of Bill Number 40-12.
In ordinance amending the budget of the City of Borton, Missouri for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Need a motion for Bill Number 41-12.
Call for the first reading of Bill Number 41-12.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Cornell for first reading of Bill Number 41-12.
In ordinance, accepting three streetlights located in the street right-of-way, which are owned by the Warren County Historical Society.
Call for second and final reading and passage of Bill Number 41-12.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dryer for second and final reading of Bill Number 41-12.
In ordinance, accepting three streetlights located in the street right-of-way, which are owned by the Warren County Historical Society.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. My next item is, we do have an executive session to discuss real estate, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to adjourn to executive session. All of them favor say aye?
Aye.
Those likewise, we're adjourned to the executive session.